Hello there. We are badly needed and long overdue. A controversial podcast about Colorado Springs. It's controversial because it makes sense. I'm your host Nick Raven, joining me to my virtual left and your right is my co-host, researcher, TikToker, co-pilot, Emily Lewis. How are you doing?
I'm doing great. I'm super excited for this, this conversation today.
Yeah, we're talking today with Ryan Lucas, who is the Democratic candidate for El Paso County County Commissioner, District One. And so if you don't, so the county, he's going to explain it all, but the short story is that there hasn't been a Democratic Democrat, Democrat, there hasn't been a Democratic Democrat. There has not been a Democratic County Commissioner in five decades.
Yes, for that district.
And that's, and that's, and that district, and that's back to when, and it's been four decades because the, they removed the at-large seats. And that's last time a Democrat was on there. So he's working to shake it up. He's going to talk about his background and stuff like that. We have a really nice, long, in-depth conversation about the issues of Colorado Springs.
We do.
And he's, because he, you know, District One is only like the, the, the top, the hat. Kind of, I, why didn't I bring that up? District One is the hat of El Paso County County Commissioners. And so he's going to talk about stuff that's really local to what's going on there on the North Side, Briar Gate. Interquest, all that fun stuff up there.
Space up there.
Right, exactly. So we have a really cool conversation.
Yes, we do.
That goes completely off the rails.
It was. Yeah, it was.
Several times. And you, but it's, it's for you and your entertainment.
We do it for you.
We are.
We get no enjoyment, no enjoyment. It's all for you.
We don't get any money for this and you don't pay anything for this. So this is a public good essentially. So uh, did you have anything? Well, you want to just hop in?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, let's go talk to Ryan Lucas.
Let's go do it.
Let's go talk, let's interview. All right. All right. So what we're going to have to do now is I'm going to have to hit start recording as I just did and say that we're not a both sides podcast. We're a one-side podcast and that side is truth, justice. And
The American way.
You know, they, there was that huge controversy in Superman Returns when they cut that out. I remember that. And whatever.
We know that unfortunately, the American way, the American way has been, has been co-opted by the Patriots.
Hundred percent.
Patriots. Also, that movie was, was really bad. Superman Returns is a trash film. Uh, that should be sent to a fire somewhere. Ryan Lucas, welcome, candidate for the Dems, for El Paso County, District One. How are you doing today?
I am doing wonderful. It's a busy day, but doing wonderful.
Oh, good. What's, what's busy about today?
Just been, been pretty busy with work. We have a big project that I'm working on right now. So I, I was busy with that all last night until about 10:30, 11, and then I had to deal with some of that this morning. And then my father-in-law is actually, his retirement party is this afternoon. So I'm going to a park, uh, uh, right after we're done with this interview, I gotta start packing up all the stuff. I went and bought catering equipment for this event because
Catering equipment.
Like, like 60 people. So like, you know, I had to go like, go and get like a chafing station and like all of that stuff. So
Ooh, fancy.
Hoping these clouds stay at bay.
They've, it's been pretty nice so far, but it is a little on the chillier side through this, through this week. Uh, yeah, no, I, I feel you on the, the working hard thing because I'm always working hard, doing things. How's the race?
You just said, you just had a, a, quite a bit of work that you were doing this morning, right? So congratulations on your finish.
Yeah, thank you. I, um, yeah, I, I, so this morning I did a 5K. This is my first 5K in year. Well, okay, I've done 5Ks in the neighborhood, but this is my first like organized event. Um, and there, there's, I've had conversations with myself over the years about do 5K, people doing 5Ks, especially those who are walking, really deserve a medal.
Yes, yes you do.
But as someone who was training to do halves, like a 5K was something I would do before breakfast. So it's like, cool. All right, you know, whatever. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna gate that. And I've got it right here. So I'll take it.
Nick got a medal for his little, for his running today.
Yeah, yeah. So, but we're not here to talk about my running, even though we've already spent half the episode so far talking about it. We're here to talk about your run. So what's, what's it like there in?
Nice segue. Look at you.
I know. El Paso County Demo, Demo, the Demo Squad.
Don't call us the Demo Squad. No, that's terrible.
The Demo Squad of truth and, uh,
We're gonna
anti-truth and injustice is what we're saying.
That's right.
That's right. That's right.
Demo, demo all of these, uh, terrible, terrible approaches to governance.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. So what is it specifically about? What the hell is District One anyway?
Yeah. So, um, so the, basically the way that this works is, uh, in El Paso County, as well as a number of other counties, especially the larger counties in Colorado, um, county government is an extension of state government. Um, that's something a lot of people don't really understand and know. But basically this is a, a segment of, uh, uh, governance, uh, where there is a board of county commissioners. So in El Paso County, we have a five county or five district board. Uh, and each of those districts is represented by one commissioner. So there are some counties in Colorado where, um, you know, they don't have that kind of district breakdown. Uh, and even El Paso County, at one point we actually had our at-large members. Um, but we now, we now only have the five district system. Um, so basically the way that that works is in, in our county, you basically have District Five, which is the central downtown area. And then you have four districts that kind of surround that, that fifth district. So CC One, yeah, exactly. It's kind of a radial system, right? So maybe if we talk about transportation later, we'll talk about how a radial system is important. But, um, in CC One, it's basically the north district, right? So, um, it kind of operates like a V, uh, out radiating out from downtown. So, uh, you know, it kind of goes up the I-25 corridor and kind of out the powers corridor.
It's like an Air Force Academy is in there.
Yeah, Air Force Academy. Yeah. So technically, Air Force Academy is just outside, right? But yes, it's, it, it basically is that trajectory. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
That's a weird district.
It is. Um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, uh, and it's a very conservative district.
It's the, it's the Cordera crowd and your Bass Pro Shop. So are you doing campaign events at Bass Pro Shop, Black Forest?
Yeah, so.
Meet Ryan Lucas down at the New Life Church or the Icon Cinema.
Uh huh. Yeah. So there, there definitely been, you know, we went to Black Forest days. Um, you know, we've, we've been going to some of the, especially the big developer meetings that are happening because there's a lot of, as you guys are probably aware, there's a lot of development happening on the North Side.
Yeah. We know.
That's kind of been their focus as of late. So, you know, that's now going to start filtering all the way down the east side of Colorado Springs. And so, you know, there's, there's some, uh, efforts expected for the southeast, uh, part of El Paso County. And then there's kind of fill that's going to happen. And, and some of that's already started out towards Black Forest and, and out east from there. Um, but that's really going to be filling in a lot more. So, um, you know, probably a lot more, uh, you know, three-quarter million dollar houses being built over, over there on the east side.
So basically one bedrooms with a single, half a car garage. Yeah.
Those are the condos. Yeah.
God, townhomes. Absolutely. So what are, so obviously you've got all that new construction, which love it or hate it, right? I mean, it's cool, especially in the terms of Colorado Springs is, um, to have culture places. Obviously everyone who's dropping a new restaurant or something, In-N-Out was up there first. Uh, was it Whataburger was up there first?
Whataburger?
Yeah. Uh, everyone's putting all their, it's like this glistening, like glittering crown of development. Uh, that kind of avoids everything else because it's the new stuff. And then Shields, who got a $16 million tax, sales tax abatement to develop up there. Uh, uh, so, so that seems like a priority, but what are other priorities up there on, for the Cordera crowd like?
Well, let me, let me just back up because, because I, I want to, I love that you had that reaction to the $16 million, you know, tax. And so I don't know if you guys know this, but I'm actually originally from Arkansas, which is, well, not originally from Arkansas, but like, that's kind of where I grew up.
Uh, you're originally from Earth.
I am. Yes, true.
That was a reaction right there, buddy.
So, so I, I, I kind of grew up in Arkansas and Arkansas, as many people know, is the home of Walmart. And, and so I grew up like in high school. Uh, I grew up in this town that had like 10,000 people in it when I was growing up. And it's significantly larger than that now. Um, part of that was because like Walmart came in and they got a huge tax break. And then they basically put all of the local shops and stores and whatnot out of business. And it became this like, you know, uh, uh, sort of suburban nightmare, uh, the town did. So, so it kind of, when I was growing up on this, in this town, it was like a one highway town with like two or three stoplights. And 10,000 people is pretty big, right? For a town with like one road. But, but it was, you know, this kind of like spread out sort of more rural town. And then like Walmart came in and then like Ashley's furniture came in and then all of these chain restaurants came in.
Yep.
And all of like the local restaurants have died. Um, it just sucked all of the life out of that town. And it all started with, uh, you know, the city council said, hey, we want, you know, we need a Walmart. And, and Walmart sucked the life out of that town. So, um, we, we won't get too far into Walmart. Uh, it's, it's Walmart's like one of those like store subjects, like when somebody's like, oh, I'm going to go to Sam's Club. I'm like, I will never, it will never happen.
Uh huh.
Uh, true story, actually. A couple of weeks ago, months, it was maybe a month ago, six weeks ago, something like that.
What is time?
We were actually, what is, yeah, whenever it was.
Yeah.
I'm campaigning, man. I don't know what day it is.
I can understand. Yeah, I hear you.
So, so we were, we were actually on a family trip and it was late, we were in Kansas and, um, and, uh, we had realized that we didn't have enough towels for everybody in the group. And so, uh, my wife, my wife's sister, yeah, my wife's sisters, my sister-in-law, uh, had said, oh, there's a Walmart in this, this town. Why don't you just stop there and grab some towels? And I was like, nope, I'll go to the gas station and go, I will pay $75 a towel. If I did not walk into a Walmart. And buy $2.50 towels. Like that's
I thought you were actually going to go into the bathroom and just like choo, 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 choo.
Why not? I mean, I would. I would do it to not go into a Walmart.
Guys, these can only get wet once. Okay. You better use them just right. So you, you grew up in, I mean, we'll circle back to the, the county thing. Uh, yeah, whatever you're doing. But where, so you grew up in, in Arkansas. How did you, like, tell us about your, your path to, to Colorado? I know you were in like Chicago for a time and all that as well. We gotta visit, hang on.
Hey kitty.
Yeah. Hi Captain. Uh, all right. And then some police are showing, sorry, they're in for the gap.
That's great.
Joyous of downtown.
Yeah.
You know, it is what it is.
Yeah. So anyway, well, so Kirby's here to hear your, about your life story. So.
Yeah. So, so I, um, my family's originally from New York, but then we kind of, the whole family, I mean, my gigantic extended Catholic family migrated from New York down to the south over time and eventually ended up really kind of essentially in Arkansas. Um, when I graduated from college, I got to go to a really fancy, posh, private liberal arts college. I got super lucky with that. Um, and, and actually student loan, you know, cancellation that, which is a very hot topic right now. I actually just posted out about this on Facebook, probably, you know, four weeks ago or so. Um, but you know, I went to one of those really fancy posh schools and uh, yes, I do have like a lot of debt and I'm going to be able to benefit from that cancellation very, like greatly. Cause I'm one of those Pell Grant ones. So I'm going to get that $20,000 instead of $10,000, which is absolutely fantastic. I think it's the right move to make for a lot of reasons, but, um,
I'd say it's not, not, whatever.
I, I agree with you, but it's a start and, and there's some other things that are coming along with it. A lot of people focus on that $10,000 or $20,000 and they don't focus on the fact that there are caps on repayment now that are significantly better for borrowers. Um, and, and so there's, there's some other benefits that are a part of that program. But anyhow, so getting back to the story.
Yeah.
I went to one of those really hot schools, but, but honestly, my total debt was actually equivalent to it. I had gone to a state school in Arkansas. Like it actually was not significantly more debt that I ended up taking on by going to one of those hot schools. So the, the whole idea of this, like there are tiers of schools and whatnot, like it's kind of BS. Like there's like, college is just stupid expensive. That's just all there is to it. Um,
Well, originally it was one of those aristocratic things like, oh, my, my son, you know, as, as, as the, you know, CEO of this rubber company, he's going to go to Princeton.
Right. Exactly. Yeah. Yeah. And that, and then it became kind of this like commonplace thing. And, and I know you guys had a really good conversation with Alvin about trades. Um, you know, big, a big supporter of those. Yo, I watch your show every week. I mean, like seriously, I was telling Emily earlier. I, I do. It just, I don't always watch it on Monday morning, but like usually by Monday afternoon, I've, I've watched it.
Are you watching it or you're listening to it? Because if you're listening to it, you would know that we missed an episode and no one told us. And uh, I had to discover that. Yeah.
Most people watch.
Yeah, I guess.
No, I'm subscribed on YouTube.
Well, that's fantastic. Great.
So I get the notification on my phone and I leave the notification up on my phone, up until I'm like ready to watch it. And then I'm like, okay, I can remove this notification.
Yay. You're our favorite for the whole day.
Oh. We'll send you a sticker in the mail. It's great.
Right?
Emily, can we get some stickers made?
Yes, we need to get stickers made.
Yeah.
Send it to the production budget.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, if you guys need a union printer, I know some really good union printers. So
We know some good union printers too. Yeah.
Yeah.
We're
They're probably all the same.
Yeah, probably. There's only like four of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, so anyway, so I went to college up in Chicago and then afterwards I was recruited to work for a public affairs firm.
I was saying like McKinsey?
No, it's much, much smaller.
Okay.
Much, much smaller, but actually
More the mix.
Um, one of the founders of that firm just recently passed.
I saw that.
Earlier this year. So Donald Ross, who actually was a mentor to me when I came out of college. So, um, I worked for his firm. Uh, it was a call, a firm called M and R Strategic Services. So I got to work on a lot of really cool things when I was working there. So I was helping, uh, with, uh, legislation around the farm bill that year. And, um, I was doing video production for candidates in Chicago and mail pieces. So I was doing nail design. And then I started doing, um, uh, media prep for candidates, that sort of thing. So I was doing a whole bunch of different jobs and then, uh, ended up moving directly into campaigns. So I was a field director for a state senate race and was, uh, doing some media, uh, production for the local Democratic Party. Then, uh, Public Interest Research Group, PERG, which, uh, also Donald Ross had a connection with, but a lot of people know that as like Nader's Raiders, right?
Yep.
PERG, uh, was, nope. So, uh, it's, it's sort of the, um, the nonprofit, uh, organization that kind of came out of the seventies, right? So this is the, the functional work that's being done to kind of improve things like, um, you know, voter registration and, you know, that sort of thing. So it's, it's, it's the, the meat of, uh, the democratic process that, that PERG does on the left, right?
Okay.
Uh, so PERG actually was spinning up a new organization to hire campaign managers all over the country. So this is back in 2008.
Obama, by the way.
Obama was also during that time period, but, um, PERG, uh, was spinning up this brand new company that, uh, would be hiring and training and teaching the next generation of campaign managers for lefty issues. Right? So we're talking about, you know, environmental issues and labor issues, stuff like that, right? So they were, they wanted to find the next generation of campaign managers. So I interviewed for a campaign manager job with them. And at the end of that interview process, they were like, why don't you just be the executive director? And I was like, well, I'm, I'm 23 years old. I don't know that's necessarily a, a great idea. Well, I, 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 I had done so many different things at that point, which is I think kind of why they were like, yeah, maybe you could do this. And I was like, okay, well, we'll give it a shot. Uh huh. So I came in, I did that for a little while. It was, um, we were, we, we knocked all of our kind of goals out of the park very quickly. Um, and then I just kind of got to a point where it was like, I don't know that my interests are necessarily the same as the organizations. Like I wanted to make this organization huge. So I started working with like Democratic Gain and like, I wanted to go into the, like build this like super network. And they were like, keep your scope to where
Stay in your lane, Lucas.
Stay in your lane. Yeah. And I was like, okay, well, you know, maybe I want to be doing bigger and better things. So I left that organization. Um, took over a state rep race, which funny enough, so I was the campaign manager for a state rep race. Um, which funny enough, so that, that state rep race in 22, or sorry, in, uh, 2008, was House District 22 and it was in Lakewood, south side of Lakewood, actually. Um, and guess what? House District I now live in after several versions of redistricting that's happened. Over here in east side Colorado Springs, I'm back in House District 22, which is insane.
Hey, man.
So
Yeah.
That's, that's how it goes. That's all the, how the ball goes. So you, you went from this political empire builder and you're like, you know what? I'm just going to run as a county commissioner for this podunk town in Colorado.
Yes, a podunk, podunk town that's going to be the largest town in all of Colorado in about 15 years, right?
I think we are literally the largest, physically largest, but do, um, population wise, we're not there yet.
No, we still have a lot of ways to go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta beat all those skyscrapers in downtown Denver.
Honestly, you know, we have, we've got like what? Three miles and we're already in Denver at this point. So.
And you gotta remember Denver encapsulate, oh, I died.
You did die.
Did Mike? Hang on. I think my cat did something. Did I? No, my, did my battery die? Oh, my battery's at zero percent. That's cool. Well, you know what? I'm just gonna, we're just gonna keep going. You're not gonna see me. It's great. Um, hang on. We're gonna, we've got magic.
Uh, you know what you can do? Just, you could just record later and do it in post-production, right?
No.
Just try to, try to keep up with yourself.
Approximate. Yeah. Like, oh, this is definitely what I was thinking. I am going to be an Olympic museum. Sentient, uh, Olympic museum, right? What?
Could be worse. It could be the stadium.
Both of those are pretty cool. I have to admit. Um, there's conversations to be had about that. So, yeah.
Yes, there are.
I am, so if you're listening to the podcast, you're not getting this full effect, but, um, I am the US Olympic Museum now. Um, telepathically talking with our guests.
Oh, is that what we're doing?
Yeah. So anyway, you're in House District 22 now. It's moved around. This is great. This is what we, this is our show. We run out of closet, uh, production values out the wall. I'm actually going to move you up too, because you're out of frame and what the hell. Uh, so anyway, you're running for this podunk town in Colorado. Uh, so how did you, so?
But it's, but it's actually, you know, it's, it, so the parallels are actually a little bit more, um, than just the House District name. Because when I was working that candidate, when I was running for the, uh, the campaign manager for that candidate in House District 22, we saw that there was this pretty significant purplefication of Lakewood that was happening in 2008. And I think, you know, we all probably are aware that that purplefication is happening here in El Paso County right now.
Finally.
Right? Especially over here on the east side, which is, you know, east, northeast side, which is still very conservative, right? I mean, let's, we're not, we're not fooling ourselves about how conservative this area is.
No, not at all.
Unless we are.
But it is changing. It is shifting, right? So, um, you know, I would call that improvement, but, uh, uh, some would just call it a change.
Yeah.
But, but it's, it's, it's been great. So I moved to Colorado Springs. My wife has lived in Colorado Springs for 14 years. Um, I moved here about four years ago. So, um, even in the time that I moved, uh, since I've moved here, I've seen that shift happening more and more. And obviously we saw the greatest indicator of that during the last presidential election. When 40%, 40% voted for Biden. Like, and that's not, I, I think there's a certain amount of protest Trump vote that probably happened there.
Yeah.
But it's still a pretty significant uptick from 2016.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. I know, um, geez, back when Obama was running for his second term. He was actually, he actually came down here and spoke at Colorado College.
Yeah.
And the number of people that were outside protesting Obama himself. It was, it was insane. It was insane. And you know, with us having things like focus on the family and stuff here, we, Colorado Springs, now Paso County is such a, the Republicans loved, that are running for office, love to come here. And you know, it's, it's just duh. So yeah, I'll be very glad to see the, the, um, the purplefication of, of here. I've been here a really long time and I really like seeing this.
Yeah. I, I remember in 2016, which was when I got politically active. Uh, I remember when Sanders came in. I know. Uh, definitely. Uh, I mean, I was just built the other day, just a couple of years ago. So
I know. Such a little newbie to the whole world.
I know. And everyone's arguing over about my budget items and this and that. Like, oh my God. Uh, but I remember being at, um, was it the Gaylord Center? Which, which is Colorado College, uh, and Sanders was down there stumping for Clinton and Hillary. And, um, there was a crowd there, but unfortunately it was a crowd. It's like, well, I'm voting for her because she's not Trump.
Um, yeah.
And which is, was the biggest and best reason to vote for Hillary. Um, so anyway, Ryan, uh, purpling here and uh, but I don't know about like your district. Your district seems like it's pretty solidly rooted. Like I don't, I don't know what the plus R is up there. Um, but it's, it's an uphill climb, more of an uphill climb.
Yeah, I actually, I actually just pulled the numbers, uh, in preparation for this, uh, podcast.
I actually envisioned you have like a, like a ticker that's just like rolling like real time.
It's actually not far. Yeah. It's not far, it's not far off. Um, yeah. It's not a ticker because we don't get that data fast enough from the Secretary of State's office.
Still, it's just rotating. It's like headline news. It just keeps rotating the same three things over and over.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Well, and it actually just flickers, right? Like it's just giving you the same information over and over again.
Yeah. Seizure inducing. Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, because that's another one of my roles. I'm actually, um, I actually work, uh, on the data and technology for the Democratic Party as well, right? So that's, that's been my role for, for a while with the party. Um, you know, outside of my role as a candidate, but, but actually, um, uh, the, the district is about 42% Republican. Uh, and it's about 12% Democrat. So it's just to give you kind of this sense.
Wait, 42%? Sorry, my giant geometric head is really caught trying to contemplate. 42% Republican, 12% Democrat.
Yep.
And then unaffiliated.
And then unaffiliated, it's everything else.
You know, unaffiliated is, they're, they're all Democrats that just don't want to say they're Democrats. You know that, right?
For the most part, some of them however, are Republicans that just don't want to say they're Republicans.
Yeah, yeah.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent. And that's actually, you know, we, um, that's, that's, so you're, you're, I love that you say that Nick, like they're really just Democrats. And I think that there are a lot of people that got, get into that mindset of, oh, well, they're just like me. They just don't want to affiliate. Unaffiliateds run the gamut, but they're basically usually about the same split as the Republicans and Democrats. They're just not affiliated. That's the only
Whatever you see on the top, as above, so below, basically.
Yeah, exactly. So there's, it's, it's not a, um, but, but it's, what is true is that in all of El Paso County, including in my district, um, there is still a pretty significant need to court those individuals because they're, unaffiliateds are more likely to split tickets, right? So typically if somebody is a part of the party, they're usually going to try to So typically, if somebody is a part of the party, they're usually gonna try to stay a little bit more straight, straight ticket, right? So they're, they're typically gonna vote for their, you know, their party, right? Because they are partisan, right? Whereas unaffiliateds, you may potentially be able to, you know, get somebody to kind of opt for one or the other, you know? Uh, for those that are really in the center of unaffiliated, right? They're not really Republicans that just aren't affiliated, or aren't affiliated. But they are actually people who, you know, want to know their candidates, right? And that's why things like canvassing and, and, you know, advertisements and all that stuff, all of that budget is really about, you know, trying to make sure that people understand what you stand for, what your, you know, what your goals are and, and that you're a good person, which quite frankly, uh, that's why purplefication is so important, is because that's when you can actually start to have conversations that result in, you know, positive elections.
Mm-hmm. You know, Ryan, over here on, uh, your Ballotpedia and clicking through and I was, when I was smiling a minute ago, I was looking at your, your three key messages of, of your campaign. And they're all fantastic. For those of you who don't, who, who can't see them or haven't seen them, um, Ryan's three key messages of his campaign are he's here to listen, he's here to represent, and he's also a Democrat.
Yep, it's a, it's a third factor. It's, it's the last thing, right? It's the least important part of this. And I think that's important for peo- for people to realize. I mean, you know, I, I grew up in a conservative family, like, you know, I, I grew up kind of surrounded my, my entire family's Republican. I always had like the crazy aunt that was a liberal that I could kind of look up, look up to, but almost my entire family is, is Republican.
So how did you end up in a, in a posh liberal school then?
Well, even though my family was, was, is definitely on the conservative side, I've never really been that way, right? I mean, social issues have always kind of been important for, for me. So, um, I mean, even going back to, you know, like my, my childhood, I always recognized myself more, you know, on the liberal side of things. Um, when I started working in politics, then it was just like, okay, I'm hard, like, hard Democrat. Like, there's no.
That was, that was what AJ had, had said. It's like, oh, you know, when I actually take a look at this, you know, I, I guess I was over here the whole time.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, it's, it's funny to figure that out whenever, you know, I mean, I, I grew up in mostly, well, often on small town Texas. Between small town Texas and Colorado Springs. Um, and so, yeah, the, uh, when you realize that you do not think just, but just fundamentally do not think like all of these other people that you know and love and, and, you know, are being raised by. It's, uh, I, I was laughing about you talking about, you know, the, the crazy liberal aunt. I am the crazy liberal aunt.
Good, because you're important. You are very important because you are a role model for other people.
Yeah, I have one nephew, um, and, yeah, when, when he was born, I was buying up all the, you know, the, the little onesies with, you know, this is what a feminist looks like and, and, you know, all of that kind of stuff. And I actually need to buy him more shirts because now he's massive. He's a year and a half and it's like, okay, well, now I can't wear any huge stuff anymore. So stop it. Oh, I know, they grow fast and I don't like it. But yeah, it's, uh, the, the crazy liberal ants are actually responsible for a lot of, a lot of people looking at, at politics within their family and going, oh, no, that's not, that's not how that goes. We need to talk about this over here.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I, I proudly, I proudly wear that, uh, that label and yay for your crazy liberal aunt.
Good.
So your, your, your angle is you're the data scientist.
It's part, yeah, I mean, that's, that's definitely part of it. I mean, I'm not the only one, right? We have a lot of candidates, especially up here on the north side. And I know you've talked to Alvin. Alvin's, you know, definitely somebody who's a data-driven person and you see that in his social media, right? I mean, uh, a lot of people don't realize how much data should be influencing the way that you run a social media campaign, but Alvin's killing it on, you know, TikTok and and, and that really does come down to the fact that he uses data to make his decisions. Rob Rogers is also up here, uh, you know, on the north side. And all of us are working on some coordinated, um, campaign elements and also policy elements that we're actually gonna be releasing over the next couple of weeks, so.
I was gonna say, I haven't seen any splashy ads with like, you know, camera pans around Ryan Lucas, like, the next generation. County Commissioner.
So I don't know when this is, when this is gonna end up going, but by the time this is out, I can guarantee a video is going to be going out that will be with camera pans and flashing lights. And it's actually gonna be, um, it'll be myself, Rob Rogers and Torres. So we have a combined, combined campaign ad that we're doing. And then we also are working with people like Eric Doherty and, and AJ, um, Alvin, where all of us are actually putting together this, um, town hall that actually is gonna happen in a few weeks, uh, which will mean that David Torres actually will have had uh, one more town hall than Lamborn has had in the last twelve years.
Oh, that's a really good, uh.
Not surprising at all.
The rep yet. Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
We've been trying to get, we've been trying to talk to, to David and, um, we're working on it. Busy dude, I understand.
He's a busy man.
Just so busy.
Yeah.
He really, yes.
You know, actually what we need to do, Nick, is we just need to do a live next Saturday downtown. Because all the people that we want to talk to are actually gonna be, um, downtown at City Hall for the Women's March.
Well, technically, I'm already downtown. Wink, wink.
All right, well, hike up, hike up your little skirt and, and, you know, let's trippity trip over to downtown and we'll just do a live.
I'll just.
And then we can talk to everybody.
We'll see.
Do it.
We'll see.
No, that's totally, you should do a man on the street podcast.
Yeah.
Actually, unfortunately for Nick, he would have to do that pretty much on his own next weekend.
Yeah, cuz you're busy.
Yeah, I, my, my, my real job, um, we have an event that is also happening on the eighth.
Yeah, cuz that's Saturday, cuz I've got a thing on Saturday too, although I'm technically downtown.
But I will be at the women, at, at the march briefly. Uh, I've been asked to actually speak at the march. Um, so I will be, I will be there for a minute and then I have to leave again. So maybe then I can, I can, you know, corner David and be like, all right, look.
We got a show. Let's run out of a closet. My host is a building. We have to get this thing going, David.
That's right.
Need to do this.
So Ryan.
You're being called by the museum.
Exactly. When the, when the Olympic and Paralympic Museum calls for you, not just for, for general funds, because it had a really bad time during COVID. It really like, it, you need to show up. It's actually a really cool museum. If you haven't been, you need to go. I've actually got.
No, we actually, we actually went during COVID.
But I've actually got the badge hanging. I'm sorry, what were you gonna say?
We actually went during COVID.
It's great.
Yeah.
It's really cool. Um, but I wish it didn't, people are, whatever. Anyway, go, go to the Olympic Museum. Ryan, why are you running for this position?
Why, why am I running headlong into a very conservative district?
Yeah.
Um, here's, here's what's true. Uh, do you know when the last time that a Republican was on the county commission?
Forty, was it forty years, right?
Fifty.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
That's close.
Fifty years. And the last time that Democrat was on the county commission was when we had at-large seats.
Yep.
So the Democrat was elected at large.
So you got forty percent of the, the populace is, is voting for Biden and there are zero Democrats on the county commissioner board for the past four decades, fifty years. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Again, I'm, I'm on the, my job here is, is the researchy bits.
Yes.
Um, so I'm actually, again, still on the Ballotpedia and showing honestly that, um, because it shows that you are House District Five, which is, you know, Lamborn. Anyway.
Oh, CD five, yes.
Yeah. Uh, and while I'm looking at the numbers even, um, from the election, the last election for that, and, I mean, Freeland didn't do horrible.
There's, there's trending upward.
Yeah, she's.
Yeah, there is.
And, and the redistricteds from the last time too.
Yeah, and I said, just, just looking at these numbers, I mean, yes, it's, they're not spectacular, but they're also not horrible runaway, never show your Democratic face in our neck of the woods again.
Right.
Kind of numbers, um, which actually kind of, Nick usually asks this question, but I'm asking it this time.
Oh.
That's because you didn't show up. That's because you sent the museum instead.
Yeah, you sent the museum in your stead.
Stop.
And so one of the things that we do like to ask is, um, what's, what would be the next steps if you are not the, the new commissioner?
Yeah.
What, what does that look like? Is that, you know, you pack your bags and you go away and try somewhere else or?
No, no. And in fact, so, um, if you're on Ballotpedia and you're looking at CD five, if you look at the primary, you'll see my name there.
Mm-hmm.
And the reason why is because I actually ran for CD five. I didn't make it out of the caucus process. So this was in twenty twenty. This was, um, I had an entire operation planned for running for, for CD five, for running for US House of Representatives.
In twenty twenty.
In twenty twenty, I actually had a staff of six that were, that were ready to go. And I already had a campaign staffer even before going into caucus. With an entire petition operation, we weren't planning to go through caucus. We were just gonna petition on. Cause that's how Lamborn likes to do it, cuz he can never really make it through caucus.
Mm-hmm.
So we were planning on petitioning on and I also had, um, I had a few volunteers at the time, but I had, uh, I had a policy writer, I had a campaign manager, I had all of this staff ready to go. And we didn't get through caucus, right? We got like eighteen percent of El Paso County.
Yeah.
So if we had gotten twenty-one percent of El Paso County, there would have been a primary election. So, um, uh, so, so we ended up having to shelve that whole campaign. The only reason we ended up going through caucus was because in March of twenty twenty, just a few weeks before caucus, when we had already collected lots and lots of petitions.
Yeah.
COVID hit and a lot of my volunteers, a lot of the volunteers of the campaign were elderly. So we were like, we can't send you door to door. Like, we cannot do this anymore. So we shut down petitions. And, and I had not attacked the, the, you know, the, the kind of primary process with a caucus sort of mentality. It's a totally different type of campaigning. So like, I was running these like unaffiliated and Republican events, like out in like the outskirts of the county, which is what you want to do if you're gonna get petition on and you want to start building like
Yeah.
some interest in the campaign for the general election, right? I was already working on that sort of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And then all of a sudden it was like, oh, all of these, uh, you know, very, um, you know, insider politic, like inside party people were the ones who decided the fate, right? So then, like, you know, the three percent killed me. I was out. Um, so going back to your question, no, I didn't cart, like, I didn't, I didn't.
You didn't go back to Arkansas.
Back out. Yeah, I didn't leave. Um, I didn't go back to Denver. Um, I, this is my home now. I mean, this is where I live. Um, more importantly, uh, you know, I don't think that I'll probably ever run for another office again. I, I didn't really intend to run for county commissioner. There wasn't a Democrat running and I hate the idea of a Republican running unopposed for a position where a Democrat hasn't been in that position in fifty years. Like, that drives me insane. So I know I'm running straight into a wall. Like, that's fine. How they got something like eighty percent of the vote last time? You know, we, we know that those things are, are realities, right?
But it may be a softer wall than it was before.
I agree.
That's the goal, right? We're trying to crack, we're trying to put cracks in that wall, right? And that's, that's my goal here. Um, so I'm not leaving after this campaign. Uh, I'm gonna continue to work with the party. I'm also gonna continue to work with some of these other candidates, right? So, you know, I'm really hoping that, uh, people like AJ and Rob and, uh, John Gerald, who's running for county commissioner down in District Five, right? Uh, you know, I want to see these candidates be successful. You know, I'm hoping that, that they're, you know, the, the numbers are looking really good for them to be very successful. And I'm hoping that we start to see some more of those candidates get into those positions. I'm gonna continue working with those, those individuals that are in those positions to continue to push the issues, right? To continue to, to improve things. Um, so this is not, this is not the start or the end of anything. This is just a step in a process, right? I mean, this is just how we, how we continue to keep the ball moving forward.
Good. Oh, that makes me so happy. I love, I love to hear that. Um.
I love the narrative of like, hey, I didn't really want to do this, but I'll be here anyway.
Um, yeah, I'll do this.
You're supporting the team. That's really, that's, that's, that is what you've outlined. That's what your background is, is that you're helping kind of everyone. Um, and the fact that we're gonna get some whip pans around you and some like really cool lights is just, uh, it's a bonus. Like, that's, that's pretty rad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and it's, and it, that's actually, just really quickly, sorry, Emily.
Oh, you're fine.
And then I'll shut up.
You're all right. No, talk.
This is actually one of the things that has been kind of central to my campaign, right? So, um, so, you know, I, you, you had asked earlier, Nick, about, you know, are you doing events at, at the, um, the Bass Pro Shop? I'm not really doing any events. I'm, I'm, I'm supporting all of these other candidates, right? So a lot of this is about how can I support, you know, you know, a state rep candidate or a state senate candidate. So it's a lot of, of doing more coordinated activities. Um, and the other key thing that I think is really important, there are two parts to this. Um, I'm not raising any money for my campaign. I'm self-funding my campaign entirely. So if you go pull me up on the Secretary of State's website in Tracer, I have no candidate committee and I am not collecting any funds. There's two reasons for that. One, it means that I'm not beholden to anybody else, right? And that's kind of the, that's kind of the public, you know, front to that, right? Is, you know, I don't, I'm not collecting any developer money, right? Which is kind of a, a plus for a lot of people.
Especially up there.
Especially up there. Yeah.
Big Whataburger up there, yeah.
That's right. But the part two to that is, first of all, I can spend whatever money I want on campaign activities, however I want to do it. Um, and, and the more important thing is I'm not taking any money away from the pool of money that goes to other candidates.
Yep.
Right? So I'm, I, I push people to other campaigns, right? When they're like, where can I donate? You can go donate to this candidate. Like, go donate to these other candidates, right? I don't need money. I need you to support these other candidates. Because the, the, the team, to your point, Nick, the team needs that support. And that's why, that's what our campaigns, all of our north side campaigns, we're all on the same team, right? We're all trying to support each other.
Yep. Again, which is something I absolutely just makes me a little giddy.
I don't know. That's a little Disney Channel for me, like aspirational, like, oh, we gotta work together.
No, it's, it's Disney Plus. It's on Disney Channel. It's Disney Plus.
Gotcha.
Yeah, speaking of, you know.
You don't get, you don't get the plastic clamshell VHS tape thing.
No, no.
True.
So.
Cause you know, on Disney Plus, they even have Deadpool.
That's.
Just so you know.
So Ryan Lucas, also Ryan Reynolds, also Deadpool, the candidate.
And, and I was actually born not far from Canada too.
See, there you go. We've, we've made those parallels now. We have, we have discovered your, your alter ego.
Mm-hmm. So what are, so what is, what are the issues? Uh, we're gonna come back because we're doing this thing. We're not talking about Ryan Reynolds today again, Emily. Like, we have the past nine episodes.
Whatever.
Twelve episodes, I guess.
Look building.
Yeah.
There's a reason I haven't been in Siji. Thank you.
Wait, I'm sorry, Emily, are you starting the building? I'm trying to segue away from that.
Yeah, that's fantastic. That's, that's the most sexual thing that I've ever heard on this podcast. Um, god damn it. Uh, so we're gonna talk about issues, um, not Emily's issues, but.
Okay.
But, but campaign, what is, yeah, yeah. So what are the big issues, um, of District, what, like, what is District One talking about? What are they voting for? And what is, like, what the hell's going on up there? Like, everyone, they're getting everything they want. Everything is far away from each other. There's no public transit, which is probably for the best. Can't have public transit people, you know, up and in and out or coming out.
Got the bed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. What are the issues up there?
Well, I mean, you're, you're exactly right. I mean, and, and you gotta keep in mind that District One is pretty varied, right? So if you kind of think about it from north to south, it goes from, you know, fairly spread out. I mean, we're talking, you know, two and a half to five acre, ten acre lots. Right? All the way down to when you get to the southern end, which I'm on the very southern end of this, of this district. Uh, a lot more density, right? So, you know, as you get into Briar. Uh, lot more density, right? So you know, as you get into Briar Gate, it starts to become a little bit denser and then a little bit further south. And then it's, you know, townhomes and, you know, half acre lots, quarter acre lots and apartments, right?
Right.
So the, the district is as varied in its interests or its, it, you know, issues. Um, as, as you can get, right? And, and that's probably true for all four of the outlying districts, right? That you're gonna have that sort of spread as you get in and then, you know, more density as you get further down. District Five is, is the only district that's really a truly dense district, right?
Yep.
So um, you know, the, the issues are just as varied. Certainly on the North Side, there's a lot of frustration with developers. Um, I've gone to a lot of developer, you know, sort of public, you know, public fora and, and events and that sort of thing. Um, I, I totally understand where a lot of those residents are coming from. And there's, because there's a certain amount of promise, right? That gets, that, that is built into the way that some of those developments happen. And there is sort of a bait and switch that a lot of those developers are doing with the residents that, that bought in with a certain expectation, right? So, so certainly there's, there's a lot of frustration there. Um, as opposed to, you know, sort of like this, so do we want to talk about the Sunset Pavilion? Like, can we talk about that for a second?
Oh, we can absolutely talk about it.
Okay.
So, so. We've talked about everything else. This has been a train wreck. We're doing amazing. Let's go.
So the, the Sunset Pavilion, which I'm actually like really, really excited about as a development, right? Because the, the, the promise of that development. Uh, from my perspective is exactly why the developer is, you know. Is presenting as the benefit, right? You don't have to go up to Denver. You don't have to go to, you know, pillars green, or you don't have to go up to. Uh, Red Rocks to be able to get a world-class show, right? And I think that they're doing a lot of really great things to try to, you know, mitigate the potential impact on that, that community. But there's no question that it's sort of this like, well, that's a massive change for the area. That's a massive change for that neighborhood.
Right.
So, you know, there's, there's a certain amount of balance that's gonna have to be done with all of this. But the, I think the, the key thing is, and you kind of alluded to it a little bit earlier, Nick, is. In order for that to work, we have to solve some transportation problems in this city.
Right.
You can't just have five thousand cars drive from all over Colorado Springs. And go park in a North Side neighborhood. Like that's just not going to be realistic.
Or you do.
You can't, I mean, you, you really, you really can't, even with like the satellite, you know, parking structures that they're talking about and all of that stuff.
Cause the, the.
That's not how people work. That's not how.
Um, parking is only like, I wanna say like eight hundred or a thousand spots or something. It's like a significantly smaller amount of parking than capacity.
Yeah, but that, that, that eight hundred, I think you're right. I think it's eight hundred spots that they have for the initial, but that's what's onsite. They're planning on doing several offsite parking spots with like shuttles driving, which.
Yeah.
Is still pretty crappy.
We'll see how that goes.
Yeah.
Um, if you've ever been to Red Rocks, like that's not how that's gonna end up working. Um, but one of the things that I was actually having a conversation with somebody about this last night. Because they had flown into the Colorado Springs Airport, which, and they were saying like, oh, it's so nice. Like you get out of your. You, you get off the plane and it takes you twenty seconds to get out of the airport, right?
Right.
But I went and picked the, um, picked them up from the airport and he was like, yeah, thanks for picking me up. I was just thinking about calling an Uber or a Lyft and I was like. I mean, you could try, but.
Yeah.
Colorado Springs doesn't have that. I mean, like, we just don't have that yet. Like, the, the, we don't have enough people here that rely on multimodal transit. For Uber or Lyft to even have a real presence here. They, they exist. Yes, you can, you can pick them up, especially if you're closer to downtown. But if you think about where this development is going, up on the very far north end of El Paso County.
There's not that.
Nothing there.
That is a distance. Well, and you'll also get there significantly faster by powers, cause you get the, well, especially as they fix the.
With the new expressway.
With the new expressway over to I twenty five, right?
Yeah.
Which is, which is coming along. But I mean, absolutely, there's no. Transport to the cities like, ah, let them figure it out, which is a bunch of crap.
Right?
Like what, whatever. That's not.
We'll see what happens.
We'll see what happens. It's gonna be crap. And having like seven square miles of parking lot. That's gonna be mostly empty most of the year, just collecting sunlight.
Yeah, it's ridiculous.
Is absolutely ob- absurd. Now, I'm not against an amphitheater. Uh, I'm not against this in. Um, in theory, on paper, what I am.
On paper.
On pa- exactly. In etched on a very geometric facade. I'm not opposed to that. What I am opposed to is where the hell it is, the lack of support. Like it should be downtown. It should be in the southeast. It should be driving people to, like it should be next to the airport. Honestly, you could put it there.
Oh yeah, you one hundred percent could put it there.
Yeah, and, but uh, you know, you put it on the north end, cause that's just where you put all the new stuff these days.
Well, that's cause where the development's happening, right?
Yeah.
And you get your sales tax payments.
Right?
Well, that too. But, but I mean, but the, I think the, this speaks to a larger problem, which is we do this sort of development. But we never connect all of the items, right? And that's so critically important to building infrastructure. To actually support. And so this is where I was talking, we're gonna bring it all the way back to the beginning, right? We were talking about sort of this radial element, right? We built all of these, these pockets where people have to drive from one pocket to another, right? So ins- and, and, and I would, I did uh, uh, check on this a couple of weeks ago. Because we were talking about trans, Nick and I were talking about transportation on Facebook, right? We had different posts that were going on. And um, and, and so I actually pulled it up. For me to get just to the, you know, just a little bit on the west side of downtown from where I am. And keep in mind, I'm at the southern end of CC one, right? I'm at the southern end of my district. For me to get from, from my place down to basically just a little southwest of, of uh, downtown Colorado Springs. Two and a half hours by public transportation. And that's only if I'm doing it at the height of public transportation on Monday morning.
Right, right.
I can't even do it on the weekend.
Yeah, Sunday, you're out of there.
Yeah, my uh, my youngest spawn um. Is uh, working at the, well, will be working again at the um. The, the, the place that shall not be named. Um, and because we're downtown and. Yeah.
I was gonna say like, which one?
And uh, the, the one that he will be working at is up at Space Center.
Yeah.
Um, and we mapped it out and it's, it's almost a two hour. Trip from, from downtown to there because he has to sit at the Citadel Mall.
Yeah.
For forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's, yeah, it, you know, Nick and I talk about the, the, the lack of transportation options. Um, something, I don't know if I actually talked about it before now. Uh, where, where my office is, um, I have to go past Memorial Park. And you cannot use a Lime scooter. In like a two mile block.
Yep.
Right there by Memorial Park.
Yep.
And. Why? Excuse me, why? This is, this, this creates such a barrier. Again, the, these barriers to transportation. And it's ridiculous. I mean, no, you probably don't want these kids take, taking the Lime scooters. Into the skate park.
Right.
Great. Make Memorial Park itself a dead zone. Let me cross the street and continue on my happy way.
Or just, or just geofence out the, the skate park. Cause like I would totally take a Lime scooter to a freaking skate park and do flips and stuff. Like hell, yeah.
No, no.
That's, that's amazing. I'm a museum. I can do anything.
No.
I don't know if you've ridden those scooters, but they wouldn't be able to do much in the skate park anyway. I mean, they're not.
Buddy, we had an episode about him.
Yeah, no, Nick and I, well, I at least, I scooter. If I have a choice between walking somewhere and scootering somewhere, I'm getting on a scooter.
Well, I'll walk. That's fine.
Yeah, because you know, I'm, I'm downtown where they're, they're building the two big, uh, the, the two apartment buildings. So they just moved a scooter pod like half a block from my house.
Oh, that's beautiful. But that's, but that's the sort of, so again, it's not a matter of like. The answer is public transportation, right? And I think a lot of people get this wrong. They think about like. When we're advocating for like better and bigger public transportation, it's not. To replace people's ability to drive a car, right?
Yep.
I'm not saying, don't invest in roads. I'm saying, you need to give a multimodal transportation. Solution, right?
Yeah.
You have to include things like buses and light rail. You have to allow for bike lanes, which actually the PPRT. We can talk about the PPRTA budget too, if you guys want to.
Yeah.
The PPRTA budget actually does a really good job at including bike lanes, right? And I'm so glad that they're catching up to Denver from ten years ago. But that's, that is not where. That's not the only answer. And, and if you look at all of the PPRTA budget, almost all of it is, we're gonna study more buses. It's not, we're gonna put more buses in. It's like, we may put in like two more shelters. But ultimately, all we're really gonna do is study whether or not we can put more public transportation in. That's absolutely wrong headed. That's not the way that we need to approach this. It needs to be now. We need to start doing this now. Because we have to start doing that sort of live, where are people actually going to use this stuff? So that we can continue to plan out that radial design for our public transportation.
Yeah.
And to your point, Emily, about, sorry, Nick.
No, go ahead.
One more thing. But um, and to your point, Emily, about the fact that, you know, going, you know, right by Memorial Park. You have to allow for what's called last mile or first mile transit. And a lot of people don't know. That it's not just about what is the, like the big route, right? Because the big routes are fine, right? It's when you have to make those connections or you have to be able to. Uh, get to the initial route because not everybody lives on the route.
Exactly.
So it's, it's fine if you only have, say, ten major routes that the city is doing. But then you have to make sure that there's access to that first and last mile opportunities to get to the route. And that's a problem that we have.
Yeah, and then frequency, we were talking about frequency, about how, you know, when you're doing, when you have some routes, it's like, well, if you miss it, you're waiting an hour. And I had to do that from the downtown terminal a couple of months back. This past summer. Uh, I missed, but like the bus was pulling away and I had to wait an hour and it was the five. Uh, which is one of the seven busiest lanes on there. Um, we can, we can talk more about PPRTA. Uh, I, I will disclaim that I'm on the Citizens Transportation Advisory Board for the city. Um, so PPRTA is a big deal and um, so you know, there's that. But what I really want to ask you, Ryan Lucas, is. You, so say there's a blue wave up there. Uh, up in District One, the Whataburger washes away and everyone's like, oh my gosh, they were, they, they used their telepathic mind device to. Convince us that the developers really had it right the whole time. You're the soul that you and, like hopefully, like John gets in there too. Um, what do you do except argue with Republicans all day?
Yeah, it's a really, it's a really great point. And actually, I actually got one of this, one of these questions. I think the Gazette asked that question, like.
Oh.
What is, what is your first? No, I know, but it was like, it was like one of those questions that was like, what do you do? Uh, what's gonna be your first priority when you get elected, right? And uh, in my, I'd like, I wanted not, not to be like very pessimistic. But my very like first response was gonna be, well, if John Gerald doesn't get elected, my first thing is I'm gonna say, hey, guys, I'm a Democrat. I'm over here.
Yeah.
Please listen to me occasionally, like.
Don't cut off my microphone.
Yeah. Because it's true. It's difficult. That would be a four to one, right? Uh, commission. So, so there is gonna be some limitation there. Um, you know, John's much more likely to be elected than I am. There's no question about that. Like that.
We're gonna ask him too. Don't worry.
Good. Wonderful. Go ahead. So, so John and I get elected. I think we've got a much better. Uh, negotiating position. And I think what's also true and, and I've heard this. Uh, the county commissioners are aware that this change is coming. So they, you know, hopefully they're gonna be a little bit more um, open to having some, some. More realistic discussions about how we approach some of this stuff.
It would be nice.
True.
Or they double down.
The first thing that I would do, or they double down. What it, what is true is regardless of whether or not John gets elected, if I am in this position, the first thing that I'm gonna. Um, that I, the first thing that I'm gonna push for is an open and transparent redistricting process next year. Um, because redistricting is, um, especially with the county commission, is the most opaque process. Uh, and that still exists. Luckily, we passed a law for, for state house and state senate, right? So all that stuff has become more transparent. That's gonna be the number one thing that I'm gonna push for. And I think that's something that even as a one to four minority on the county commission, I can still accomplish, right? Out of the game. Because I will make it such an issue for all of the voters. That, and I think that they want that. I think that they, I think that crosses party lines. I can make that a, a reality. If it's five Republicans, they're gonna do the same thing they did last time, which is they're gonna go into their room. They're gonna write their map. They're gonna present like there were three options, but they really only had one realistic one. And that's the one that's gonna end up being. Being the map.
Yeah.
I can, I can envision this kind of being a, uh, hey, did you hear something squeaking over there in the corner? I think the Democrat's trying to say something. Anyway, uh, yeah, I, I can see.
You just have to be very noisy, very, very noisy about this stuff.
Squeak.
Yeah.
Yeah, um. Yeah, what, PPRTA, that's a big deal, especially since this, the city relies on that. Uh, pretty much exclusively for um, for basically getting any road projects done. And then, and any of that kind of infrastructure done is through uh, PPRTA. So, and it's up for. Uh, election this year. It's still got two years left, two or three years left, as I understand it. So if it doesn't pass this year, they still have some chances to. Modify. Obviously, they tossed out the constitution, uh, expansion survey, you know, one of those surveys to examine. Um, right, I'm glad, okay. We can, we can, we can lambast the idea of like, ah, they put a survey to look at maybe doing something. But can you imagine they're like, hey, tomorrow, we're just gonna pave cons- constitution all the way down to Fontanaro. Um, and not look at that in any other way.
Yeah, uh, yeah. So I'm not, I'm not lambasting the, the research, right?
Those are your words, Ryan.
No, 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 no. What, what I, what I said was, is that when it, you look at it as a percentage of budget. I'm concerned about the percentage of budget that is still being spent, wondering whether or not we are going to solve for public transportation.
Yes.
That to me, so it's a proportional problem, right? I'm not saying that we don't need to, you know, build the overpasses on powers. We, that we don't need to. Start working on Mark Shuffle right now, right?
Or a year ago.
Yeah, right. All of that's, what's, what's true is that we're ten years behind in all of the funding that we should have been applying for this stuff. You know.
Yeah, one hundred percent.
This stuff should have been done by now, right?
Yeah.
Because we're all ready to the point where the congestion is problematic. We're already to the point where the disrepair. On the projects from ten years ago is already starting to hurt us, right?
Right.
We have so much work that has to be done. And, and, and I know that some commissioners. Are very proud of the fact that we are very uh, cheap. I'm gonna say cheap.
Yeah.
That's not their words. But that we are very cost conscious or budget conscious with the way that we spend our dollars. Well, what's true is that we're not building for a world-class city. We are building like we are still this small podunk town.
Yeah.
And, and a series of small podunk towns.
Right.
We can't do that, like.
The mayor called it the tax burden, like Color Springs has among the lowest tax burdens of any city of its size. And it's like, the results show, dude.
Boken like a true Republican. Yeah, exactly. No, that's, that, that's exactly the problem, right? And, and so, you know, the, so in the next couple of weeks, we've got some stuff coming out that we're putting. That, that all of these campaigns on the North Side have all been working on around how we want to. Build around the next, build around Colorado Springs and El Paso County. Focusing on space tech, right? Space tech is where we're focusing our intention. It's a really good handrail. For how we're going to approach a lot of different problems, right? So we're not saying that space tech is the only answer to everything, right? But it's a way for us to focus our intention in our development because it is bread and butter of what has built Colorado Springs.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah.
So, so in order to continue to push it. For better, absolutely. There's definitely some negative sides to all of that. But, but what's true is, you know. When you, when you, all of us have these cool little devices in our pockets that have GPS and guess where that came from? It's the exact same stuff, right? Like all of those developments. Uh, we, we want to continue to build that. And, and I think about this, so I, I moved here from Denver. And I think about the entire Front Range, the I twenty five corridor, all the way from Boulder. And its security operations, so IT security operations. A lot of people don't know that. and its security operations. So IT security operations, a lot of people don't know this, but Boulder is actually like a very big IT security, uh, hub. You think about Denver and a lot of its, um, consumer grade, uh, development that, that has been building over the last, you know, fifteen years. And then down into Colorado Springs where you're talking about military and space tech and all of that, right? So if you think about that entire corridor, there is so much that if we could integrate and start building across the I twenty-five corridor, we have kind of a natural place to, to really kind of focus our energy and intention. But in order for us to do that, we have to be able to support the jobs that are coming to El Paso County.
Yep.
And you can't support the jobs that are coming to El Paso County without having support for all the other jobs that need to be there to support those jobs that are coming to El Paso County. Without public transportation that's going to allow people to move around Colorado Springs, right? The fact that we built the Gap project and did not put light rail between Denver and Colorado Springs is going to be hindsight that is going to bite us in this state for a very, very long time.
Well, and I think, I think that's when you get trust jurisdictional, like that's definitely a federal. I mean, the feds are giving a bunch of money to the, the Gap program. In fact, they only promised that if, if El Paso County put in, you know, their fair share to facilitate that, but, um, yeah, I.
But we put it, but instead of putting in rail, we put in, in HOV lane. Like we put in a.
Yeah, that's the problem, not the, not the, oh my God, we're gonna, they're gonna charge us to use the interstate now. Um, though the problem is that we're only building car infrastructure. And we can sit here and talk about buses and whatever until we're blue in the face. We've done it before.
Yeah, which we do.
But that's not enough. You can't just add buses. You have to start de- decreasing the incentive to drive a car. And I'm not saying like, we're gonna take all the cars into a lot and burn them. Um, that's what.
We're not coming for your cars. I promise. We're not coming for your cars.
We're not coming for your SUVs or anything like that. I love cars. They're great. I use them at the range all the time. They're fantastic. Okay? I'm not talking about taking your cars. Now, what I am saying is that we're gonna provide some options to your cars, okay?
That's right.
So for people who don't have cars, who don't have the economic ability to use a car, especially in a city as big as ours, it's, it's nice to have multimodal options. And the fact that the county has been lax on this uh, has obviously been frustrating. So it's been, it's been left to the city, led by a conservative Republican administration, strong mayor, uh, who has not had any inkling towards this or the arts or so many things. Now, you talked about space tech. One thing that's frustrating about space tech and, you know, space tech has been huge for Colorado Springs for better and worse. Space tech is why our city is so big, but it's also a huge reason why we have all the problems that come with being so big. We did, we did not plan for this sprawl. In fact, we only planned for it to be sprawl. We didn't plan for these infrastructures and it's a conservative group. So it's like, we're not gonna pay for anything more. Our burden's gonna be less. So the idea is that the city and also the county should be looking at diversifying industries, luring in people in industries that don't exist here yet.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that aren't just like, cause all it's gonna take is someone to realize that maybe we're overfunding the military industrial complex. Uh, maybe a little too much every single year needlessly. Um, and then who's gonna be the first? We're gonna be Detroit. We're gonna be the Detroit of the space tech um, industry and it, and people, it's gonna be an exodus. The roads are gonna, we're gonna have houses abandoned, stuff like, I mean, it sounds apocalyptic, but it's happened across the country where
Well, yeah, it has.
Cities, um, built around a single industry that really got them so far so quick. And then what happens? The industry changes and then the city and then, and the people are like, well, we don't need to do anything. Space tech's doing great for us. So.
Well, well, and just to be really clear about that, technically that's happening now.
Yep.
Right? So Space Force, obviously, this is still like in, like in consideration, right? But as of right now, that's going to Alabama.
So far, yeah.
So what do you think is about to happen to Colorado Springs, right? If we don't take this, we have to take that back. And that's going to take a concerted effort across layers of government in order for us to take that back.
Like senators, like Hickenlooper and Bennett are like, yo, don't. And then even Mayor Suthers and, and Lamborn are like, no, don't.
Yeah, right. But there's, but they say, no, don't. But they're not, it's not, they haven't done the work to actually support it staying here, right? That's what has to be done. And that's what we're all working towards, right?
Exactly.
This is, this is not about what we want to happen, right? Because you're exactly right. Somebody can get a wild hair and suddenly Space Force is going to Alabama. Like, that's, that's how that happened.
It's not how people are supposed to operate, but you know.
No, it's not the way it's supposed to operate, but that's the way it is. So in order for us to make the case that we are the place where that should be, to your point, Nick, you're exactly right. You have to be more resilient. You have to be resilient to that sort of change. So I'm not saying that space tech is the answer. It's not, we're gonna build Colorado Springs to be this center for space tech and that's it. There's nothing else. What I'm saying is that we weren't prepared for the resilience. We're still not prepared for the resilience.
Nope.
To be able to support that type of industry.
Right.
There's not another industry that could come in, just like there's not another industry that could go into Detroit right now, that not reasonably just move into there. Right? Luckily, software and data is pretty portable. So Colorado Springs is actually in a pretty good shape for that.
Yeah.
But if you think about the jobs that we're talking about, which we're talking about data analysts, we're talking about coders. Those are people that if space tech disappears, there are fifteen other tech silos, verticals that Colorado Springs could potentially absorb. So, but, but again, we're not talking about, that's the only job here. We're saying that you have to have all of the infrastructure. We're talking public health, education.
Yep.
Transportation.
To be able to support.
All has to be able to support it. And that makes you resilient to those sorts of problems when an entire industry dries up.
Mm-hmm. That's, you know, that's, that's kinda how we wound up with, and we've talked about this before, Nick. This is how we wound up with all the churches that we wound up with back in the.
Yeah, the church industrial complex.
Yep. And we don't want that to happen again. So.
Yeah, right.
We need to, we, we definitely need to focus on, on the infrastructure of Colorado Springs as a whole. So that we can continue to bring in industries that will keep us moving forward. And because you know, we, you look at, you look at some of these other tech places, I'm, you look at, at Seattle. Um, you know, and, and, and other, other space, uh, other places. And thank you. Well, that's ridiculous, but, um, you know, they, they built their infrastructure to support these, these high-tech people, these high-tech jobs, these high-tech industries. Which is why they continue to go there. And it's.
But also Seattle has Boeing. So like, if, if Microsoft were to disappear off the planet or something tomorrow, like they'd still be making planes there and, and, uh, was it Everett or whatever it is.
Yeah, but you have to look at, they, again, they have the, they have the infrastructure to support all of these things. We have politicians that are standing up here right now talking about, you know, we wanna do this for Colorado Springs. We wanna bring this in. We wanna bring that in. And, you know, we have a stadium downtown and, you know, whatever else.
It's a pretty cool stadium.
Without.
Stop begging on the stadium.
Without us having the ability to get all of these people around.
Yeah, they're, they're talking about things that aren't real, like Jesus claiming the seven mountains of society so that, you know, the end times will come and then Jesus will figure out everything.
Stop it. That's, that's another episode.
Yeah, it was actually the last episode. Yeah.
Yes.
So you know what, Ryan? You sound very reasonable. Um, if I were in your district, I'd probably, you know, I think you should run for county commissioner. Uh, in El Paso County District.
Absolutely.
I think you should consider, I know you were hesitant at first. I know you're just kinda behind the scenes guy, but I, as, as a foundational tourist knew, a new fixture of this city in a new renovating part of this town that is very important. I, um, I can endorse you, cause I literally can't, but, um, I think you should try. I think you should go for it.
I appreciate that Nick has committed to this role the entire time.
Yes.
He has not faltered from the personality.
No, not at all. Not at all.
Yeah, but someone like, I, I really need to get squeegeed. Like it's really getting weird and, um.
Yeah, the, 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 not that the getting squeegeed part is weird.
No, that's not weird. It's weird when I'm not squeegeed. That's, that's.
It's just weird. It's really weird just to hear somebody say, squeegee, like I've not been squeegeed.
I'm looking at this picture of me and it's like, this is just what has to get done.
Oh, Lord.
Ryan, thank you.
So this is, this is how we, how we roll.
This is our show. Yeah.
Anyone that, that wants to be on here or that we ask, this, this is what you're, you're setting yourself up for, just so you know.
Also, no unsolicited, um, offers about your trash thing that you're selling. Um, we're, that's not the type of podcast, right? Ryan, do you have any final thoughts? Um, stuff we haven't talked to about, um, something that you've like had in the back, like you were prepping for this show, being like, man, I really wanna talk about uh, metropolitan tax districts. Like I'm really.
I don't, I don't wanna talk about that. I definitely don't wanna talk about that. No.
That seems like a really great opportunity.
No, I will, I will leave.
Yeah, I'll, here's, here, uh, here, I'll give you, I'll give you a pardon tie. Um, I, I think it's, it's very common for us to talk about some elections that are very, very important, right? That the twenty twenty election is being very, very important. Presidential election is being very, very important. There are some times where there are particular candidates that it's very, very important to get out for, right? But I think a lot of people don't realize that, that elections are only a part of this political process that are a part of the policy process. But you have to stay committed to all of the parts. It takes things like this podcast, which raises these sorts of questions for people to actually contemplate. So that that way they take that off into, you know, conversations with their friends and their family and hopefully start to improve the way that all of us are thinking about these problems because these are not just things that the politicians get to decide. They're not things that parties just get to decide. This is all a part of a very, very involved process and it really does require everyone to be involved. So I would say, get involved, right? If you can get involved with the campaign right now, that's great because there's, there are campaigns that are going on right now. But that also means getting involved in local organizations, committees. Um, you know, getting, getting involved in all parts of the process so that we can actually start to make some real improvements around here. Because we can throw candidates a wall. We were talking about that earlier. We can throw candidates a wall all day long, but it takes institutional change for those cracks to actually start. So get involved would be my last thing.
Very nice. Yeah. And I was, i- if I could, if I could add, um, making sure that we understand the importance of local elections. Um, you know, that's, that is, that is really key. You know, making, making changes from, e- essentially from the ground up.
Yeah, absolutely. Ryan Lucas, thank you so much for, for chatting with us. Um.
For putting up with us.
For putting up with us. Um, you are the first time that I've ever interviewed anyone uh, as a structure. And, you know, that's just, it's gonna take some getting used to.
Let's not encourage him, by the way.
Yeah, let's not do it again.
Hmm, hmm.
Absolutely not.
I don't like this negative talk. Uh, Ryan, again, thank. Yeah, yeah, def- yeah. And this is my photo. I did, this is not courtesy like USOC or anything. Like this is, this is mine. Because it's a, it's a selfie.
It's a really good, that's a really good distinction that you made there so that you're not copyright infringement.
Yeah, yeah. Come at me, bro. Anyway, um, Ryan, again, thank you for, for, for hopping on and, um.
Yeah, thank you. This was, this was actually, yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me.
Yeah.
We will, um, I said, I'm, I'm sure we will see you around the, around the bits and such. And thank you for putting up with our silly little stuff.
All right, fantastic. All right, all right. Here we go. So anyway, uh, as you can tell, things went completely off the rails. Um.
Very sideways, very quickly.
Sideways and kind of an angle. Okay, every time that I walk by myself when I'm in my corporeal form, uh, I really, I really enjoy just the architecture, uh, of this building.
It is a very cool looking thing.
Yeah, and you should go visit it because it is a fixture of our community. Um, now it is, and we're paying for it. So you should use it. Is what I'm saying. But no, we, we, we really did. We had a, a really good conversation with Ryan. Um, uh, we've got some really cool conversations coming up ahead in the next few weeks, leading up to the election. And, um, I'm, I, I, I'm excited. This was a lot of fun. And I know we get a lot of good laughs up. But we also got to talk about some deeply rooted issues here.
Absolutely.
Springs. And that was, that, like honestly, that's the mission of the, the podcast is to provide a voice uh, and talk about the stuff. I mean, we're badly needed and long overdue. And I think there, there are people who agree. And if you don't watch the show every week, you should. Uh, and if you don't listen to the show every week, I mean, you should, uh, because we're talking.
You should either be looking at us or listening to us every week.
Exactly. Or if, in my case, temporarily, uh, visiting me and.
No, no. I will not be inside you.
All right. Well, in that case, do you wanna get us out of here?
Absolutely, Nick. All right. So Badly Needed and Long Overdue is a podcast about shaking things up in a conservative city. This show was hosted by Nick Raven, usually. And myself, Emily Lewis. You can watch the video version of this show on YouTube and listen to us anywhere you find podcasts. When Nick remembers to download the podcast.
Upload.
Yeah, upload. Well, excuse me. Uh, our theme music is by The Knock Blockers, our local, local ska band. Uh, they are playing live uh, throughout places in town. Um, definitely think you should check them out. Uh, you can reach us on pretty much all the social medias. Uh, on Instagram, we are Badly Needed Podcast. On Twitter, we are at Badly Needed C O S. On Facebook, at Badly Needed and Long Overdue Podcast. And on TikTok, which Nick has, has become our, our TikTok maven. Um, at B N L O Podcast.
Raven the Maven. Well, I'm gonna get us a nice big squeegee bath. Um, but we are badly needed and long overdue. And we'll see you next time.